Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It's time for our council meeting to begin tonight. I want to welcome all of you here. We begin with an invocation and pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Dale Clark, if you will stand, please.
Our Father, bless this council tonight as we gather to discuss the business of this city. Give us wisdom and insight as we deliberate so that the decisions we make will be in the best interests of all our citizens. Bless those who have suffered from recent hurricanes and earthquakes. Also bless our troops in Iraq and Afghanistan and other troubled spots around the world. Keep them safe as they seek to protect the right of freedom for us in this country and for all others around the world. In your name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the like of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we do welcome all of you to our council meeting tonight. And for those of you who are watching on HCTV, we're, we welcome you as well. We have a new face sitting in our attorney's position tonight. This is Fritz Quast. He is here in place of Wayne Olson. And Fritz, welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to have you with us. Our first item on the agenda is a presentation, and I'll ask our city manager, Mr. Muir, if he will, to introduce this item at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. Is Chief McIntyre's doing this, or Perry, or, I'm sorry, I'm not more?
Thank you, Mayor.
Team it? You're gonna team it together? Okay. Chief McIntyre made a presentation at the council or work session last week going over the city's emergency management plan and how things are going. This just kinda came to light in the events with Rita and Katrina and how they affect our city. We thought that it'd be appropriate for the citizens to hear this as well, so Chief McIntyre's gonna go over that presentation. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor, council.
Oh, she's trying to turn the TV on, overhead.
The light switch is over here.
I think Bob can, there he goes.
Mayor and council, we wanted to come tonight and bring you up to speed with what we're doing in emergency management planning and mitigation efforts in the city. In light of the recent events, it gives us a good opportunity to do some learning from what went right and what went wrong in those events, and we're trying to apply that even to Halton City's plan. Over the years, I guess since the early eighties, we've had an emergency, a working emergency management plan in Halton City. Since the early nineties, we've been associated with State of Texas Department of Emergency Management, and our basic, or they, they look at plans as basic, intermediate, and advanced. And currently, we are at the basic level. And months ago, we decided that we wanted to move it up to an advanced level. And so we've been working real hard, and Perry Binham's here tonight. He's a driver in our department, and he's been helping us with updates to these plans. And so we're moving forward with that. We're trying to keep it under ten pounds. You can see the, the plan grows daily, and so it's quite an extensive document. Perry, if you would, bump the first one. We'll start off with why do we plan? Of course, it saves time. It doesn't do you a lot of good to start planning the day of the disaster, so we try to move ahead and do that. Facilitates an integrated effort. We have a lot of players, both private and public, that help us during an emergency, and so we try to facilitate those through the plan. It also helps ensure essential, I can't speak, ensure essential activities are carried out, and it provides a concise statement of emergency responsibilities. Each director in the city has distinct responsibilities in the emergency management plan that they're required to carry out. Our plan is set up, the mayor is the director of emergency management, and I am the emergency management coordinator. Of course, Tom Muir, the city manager, runs the show. Our emergency management plan is comprehensive. It goes from A to Z. It's quite extensive, covers just about anything we can think of. It's also risk-based. We looked and did a quite in-depth study of things that could affect Halton City as far as risk goes. Earthquakes are not a big concern for us here, even though I guess there is a slim possibility. We look at things that we deal with regularly: floods, tornadoes, drought, just about anything you can think of, we've tried to include in as a risk base. It is an all-hazard approach, and that's designed around tasks or functions instead of specific hazards. In other words, we don't just have a plan for a tornado. We have plans that we can apply to just about any event that occurs in Halton City. Our plan, it describes the legal basis. That's quite in-depth. We have a local ordinance, city ordinance, that created our emergency management organization. The state has numerous mandates that apply to emergency management, as well as federal has even more than that. So all of those are included into the plan and help us with the legal basis of our plan. The plan also outlines the lines of authority. Again, it stipulates who's in charge, and when they're absent, who's, who's in charge in their place. The organizational relationships, it's a very important part of it. As you could see in the Katrina incident, that those things became quite blurred and didn't work well. So this plan also works on that. As we pick up things that came out of Katrina, we certainly try to apply those back to our plan. And it includes a concept of operations, and also assigns responsibilities, again. Okay. The basic plan, it provides an overview of our emergency response organization and policies. Again, it's a very comprehensive plan and covers a lot of turf. It also provides a general understanding for all involved agencies and organizations. Once we get into this basic plan, we, we deal with a lot of customers. Most recently, we used one of our annexes, that's a part of the basic plan, as a sheltering device with Hurricane Rita. We had over 300 visitors in our town, and we actually set up our ELC and utilized that annex to help us. Churches were a big part of that, as far as helping us with that program. So you can see we're involved with a lot of, a lot of agencies once we open up our ELC. The second part of our basic plan is the functional annexes. These are very specific in function as to what they do, and they all have assignments to them. Annex A is warning. Everything to do with warning that we have in the city is assigned to that annex. Also, that has a director that's assigned to it, which is the police chief. We try to match up these directors and their responsibilities to like functions of their daily, daily job. There's a few that, that we, we couldn't, so you'll see that one in just a moment. Communications, again, that's assigned under the police chief. Shelter mask care, director of library services, that one that really doesn't fit, but she's very good at it. Radiological protection is assigned to the fire chief. Evacuation is assigned to the police chief. Firefighting, of course, to the fire chief. Law enforcement to the police chief. Health and medical services kind of split between the fire department and MedStar. Emergency public information is our own friend Burns. And recovery is assigned to the engineering department. It's, it's rather lengthy and needs repair every year. We have to do something with that Annex J every year. Public works and engineering is assigned to the public works director. Energy and utilities is assigned to the assistant city manager when we get one. And resource management is assigned to the HR director. Direction and control is assigned to the emergency management coordinator, which is me, too, so. Human services is the HR department. Hazard mitigation is the fire department, or the fire marshal is actually assigned that one. NXP is one that we've been working on quite a bit, and you've, you've heard us talk about it before. We have a couple of public meetings that are coming up concerning NXP hazard mitigation. There's a subsection to that, it's called the Hazard Mitigation Action Plan, and it's quite a detailed plan that we have to get public input on, or we want to take public input on. So we will be having two meetings this month, and the public is certainly invited to come in and listen to it and give us some advice. We'd love to incorporate it into the plan if we can. Those meeting dates are October 12th and October 26th at 7:00 PM at the Central Fire Station on the second floor training room, 5525 Broadway Avenue. Once we complete that Hazard Mitigation Action Plan, it'll be brought to the council for ratification. And so that is one annex that we're still working on, that is considered in the intermediate level. Annex Q, HazMAP and Oil Spill Response is assigned to the fire chief. Search and rescue to the fire chief. Transportation to the assistant city manager. Donations management is assigned to the finance director. That's the only other annex that we have not completed and sent to the state for, for review. Annex U is legal, of course, our legal team covers that area. And Annex V, terrorist incident response, is an area that's assigned to the police How do we make all this work? We have an emergency operations center. It's, our ELC is a specially-equipped facility that, from which government officials exercise direction and control and coordination of the resources for whatever disaster or emergency that we're dealing with. The ELC is staffed by local officials. There are different levels. In this past incident that we did with the sheltering, I found myself and the, the fire marshal and Mr. Binham, we were able to handle the ELC and assist the shelters in that capacity without bringing all the other players in. So you'll see different levels of staffing. In a full-blown tornado or an incident of magnitude, we'd see the mayor, perhaps the mayor pro temp, the city manager, assistant city manager, police chief, just about everybody you see on that list that are authorized to activate. And we'll also bring in TXU, I said, almost said Lone Star Gas, but our utility companies will also bring those in to assist us in those situations. Our primary ELC is located at the Central Fire Station on the second floor. We also have a sheltering area there for the, for the ELC. The following people may activate the ELC, and that's, that's something that normally I do, or the fire marshal starts the ball rolling, but these other people also can do that. Of course, the mayor being the director can activate the ELC anytime he sees fit. Mayor, city manager, assistant city manager, fire chief, fire marshal, chief of police, public works director, finance director, and library services director can also do that. We've put this chart up, it's somewhat difficult to read, but it, it, we saw a lot of things with Katrina, the flow of help coming from the county and the state and the federals was a problem. This is an area that I think that we'll see quite a bit of work done on in the next few years, is to take a lot of that red tape out and expedite that help and care from those other agencies coming in. Generally, how it works in Halton City, if we have a disaster, we must utilize all of our resources first, our mutual aid agreements, and once we've exhausted all those, we can ask the county for help. The county courts will authorize use of any county equipment and services, resources that we need. If we exceed that, then we place a call to the state regional liaison officer of the disaster district in Garland. They will rally up what sources the state has locally to send to us. Then if we exceed that, it will move on to the state operations center, and the governor has control at that point in time. From that point, the governor can ask for aid from our neighboring states or the federal government. So that's kind of a flow chart of how we would, would receive aid in, in a major disaster. And that's pretty much it for, for that part of it. We do have some ongoing things in, in our emergency management plan that, that we continue to work on. Like I say, it's something that we work on every day, and, and it must be worked on every day because it changes that rapidly. One of the things that we're looking at this year is developing our CERT teams, or Citizens' Emergency Response Teams. It would have been very beneficial to have those folks in place to help in the shelters. There's very few first responders in our cities, so we have to depend on outside help in, in the event of a disaster. So we're gonna work hard on that this year and try to get that developed and get it up and running. The other thing that Perry is helping us with is the public education part of it. And in December, I think Fran's gonna have a help kit come out that will help citizens be able to design their own disaster relief kits for their homes and their families. And so we're gonna work hard at trying to get that done. And then we'll continue to plan and, and design our plans to, to meet the needs. And another thing that we plan on doing is putting together another tabletop exercise this year and putting the pressure on our directors to respond and utilize the plan.
Thank you, chief, for your, for your report. Members of the council, do you have any questions or comments for the chief? Councilmember Clark, and then Councilmember Sutton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, you said we're at the basic level. Do we want to strive to go to the next level? How hard is it? Is it somewhere we want to be?
Yeah, that's, that's something that we decided we wanted to do, is be at advanced level planning stage in Halton City. We have already accomplished all that with, with the exception of two, and the hazard mitigation that we're gonna be meeting on this month is a part of that. So our, our Annex T, that donations management, we've already completed that. We'd just like sitting down with the finance director to go over it and make sure that everything that we placed in there that we're able to do. So we're right on top of it. We have submitted, I think, five or six annexes over the last month or so, but of course, the state's having some difficulty. Our regional liaison officer that reviews that has been deployed during the hurricanes, and so he's not been able to, to get right on those things. But I feel very confident that as soon as they're able to get back and get those things reviewed, we'll be up to the advanced level of planning.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sutton?
Thank you, Mayor. Jerry, thanks for bringing this presentation. At the end, you talked about some of the things you're doing in training, but I, I just wanted to emphasize that this is not just a, a plan on paper. It, it has actually been things that you've been working out over the years, too, in practical training. Could you go just a little bit more in some of the practical training things you've been doing to implement this, these plans?
Sure. It's, it's a very functional plan. We don't put it on paper unless we can do it and back it up. A lot of these things we can't do alone because we are a small community. The things that we had done, part of our planning with the sheltering is we'd gone out last year and talked to churches and asked them what their feelings were, and if they were capable of handling refugees in the point, or evacuees, I guess it is now. If, in fact, we came into a position of, of having to do that, we didn't think we'd have to exercise it this quick, but it, it made it so much easier being able to go to our plan and pull it out. We had their phone numbers, their names, the places, and we were able to get a hold of them very quickly, put it into place, and it was a, a very good thing for Halton City. And we hope that all of our plan does that, and that's why it's so important for us to exercise it, so that we can find the glitches and, and repair them and get it fixed. And so we continue to, to try to do that.
Okay, anything else? Before we go on to the next item, chief, I want to thank you for making this presentation tonight. This is the third time I've heard this presentation, and it conveys a very important message, I think, that has been driven home by Katrina and Rita. And then we constantly are hearing things like earthquakes and tornado season be coming up here in a few months for us. I want the citizens of Halton City to know that this matter of emergency management is taken very seriously, that some very focused effort is being made by a, a number of people under your leadership, chief, to prepare us for whatever may come along, and for us to give some forethought to some of the ways that we can respond in, in the various types of situations. I know with what we have seen happen in New Orleans and in, along the Gulf Coast, has really brought into focus, in a way maybe that we never have had brought to that same degree of focus before, the need to be prepared. And I want the citizens of Halton City to know that every effort is being made, and God forbid that we should ever need to implement anything on a large scale like we saw to the south and the southeast of us here in the last few months. But if that should happen, great effort is being made to take our level of preparation to the next notch. We're moving forward, and hopefully, if we find ourselves in a position, we're gonna, we're gonna be ready to, to react and respond. So I want to thank you, chief. Mr. Muir, anything you want to add? Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Muir, you want to introduce the announcements and the events for us, please?
Sure. Before I do that, let me just let the citizens know that there was an item on the agenda regarding a presentation on factors affecting water rates. And our finance director, Joel Welsh, was prepared to do that, but he fell ill today, so we'll be doing it at the next meeting. Fran, why don't you go ahead and start making your way up? She's got a lengthy list of events, a lot of things going on in Halton City in October.
Thank you very much. Yes, October, especially this week, happens to be extremely busy. As the fire chief mentioned, there'll be two public meetings about the HazMAP plan, Hazardous Mitigation Action Plan. First one is this Wednesday, the 12th, at 7:00 PM at Central Fire Station, 5525 Broadway Avenue. And the public is invited to come and give input and also learn more about the emergency management plan. On Thursday, the 13th, this coming Thursday, the Halton Homecoming Parade will take place at 6:00 PM. The starting point is Friendly Lane at Broadway Avenue, and Broadway Avenue will be closed between Friendly Lane and Carson Street. That's so that the parade participants will be safe and residents, and anyone that wants to come is invited to come and walk, and watch along Broadway. Participants will start lining up at 5:00 PM, and there'll be a lot of activity around City Hall, the library, and around the middle school. And so it'd be, if you're not in the parade, it probably is a good place, good time to avoid those areas until it clears out. Also, the parade will be crossing Denton Highway at about 6:15 PM. So again, it, it'd be a good idea to avoid that intersection at that time. Murder mystery night will take place on Friday, the 14th, at the library, beginning at 6:30 PM. This is a free event, and it's just a lot of fun for people who like to solve mysteries. The theme is lethal luau, and so if you want to dress in Hawaiian clothes and come and enjoy that, that's free and open to individuals 17 years old and older. Then on Saturday, we will be offering a free landfill day at the C and D landfill, which is located at 4144 Dick Price Road, that's in southeast Fort Worth, near Kennedale and Mansfield. The hours are 6:00 AM until 1:00 PM. People who come are required to show that they live in Halton City, so they're asked to bring a Halton City water bill and their driver's license. The limit is one pickup load per household, and it's household waste only. They're not accepting any household hazardous waste, and no tires, please. Flu shots will be offered at the Coliseum on Tuesday, October the 18th, between the hours of 9:00 AM and 2:00 PM. And the flu shots are $20, although they are free to senior citizens with Medicaid Part B coverage, and they are really available at this time to people who are at high risk: senior citizens, people with chronic conditions, children six months through 23 months of age, medical care workers, pregnant women, residents of nursing homes, and other long-term care facilities. And that's about it. If you have any questions about the shots, it's the Tarrant County Health Department that will be administering those. All the information, just about everything I'm gonna say this evening is on our website, which is haltoncitytx.com, so please visit the website if you, if you need more details about what I'm talking about this evening. The library director, Leslie Smith, asked me to announce to everyone that the library has been accredited as a fully qualified member of the North Texas Regional Library System for the year 2006. In order to get this accreditation, of course, they have to meet certain qualifications. And as they are accredited, they will continue to be able to offer continuing education workshops, cooperative purchasing or for vendor discounts, computer training, grant monies, customized promotional materials, and limited free copying. So it's, it's a really good thing for them to be accredited this way, and just proves what, what a high-quality library we do have here in Halton City. Next thing is the Fun Time Live program that's offered every Saturday at the Recreation Center, and it runs from 7:00, 7:00 PM until 11:00 PM. It's for children in the third through eighth grades. It's, the cost is $7 per child, and it's a great way for kids to enjoy the evening and, and be safe. It's completely supervised, and there's all kinds of activities. And again, that's at the Recreation Center every Saturday night. The Dickens on Broadway event, which is our annual community tree lighting, will take place on December the 1st at 6:00 PM. And this year, it's going to be at the Recreation Center, Broadway Park. Plans are currently in the works, and the beautification board actually sponsors this event, and they are looking for vendors, craft vendors for Dickens on Broadway. And so anybody that's interested in becoming a vendor is welcome to call me at City Hall, and my number's 222-7767. The next event is Howling Halloween, and that is October 29th, it's a Saturday, at the library, and that's at 2:00 PM. And this is craft stories and a costume contest for younger kids at the library, that's on October 29th. The Halloween Carnival, the annual event, that's the community event, will take place on Halloween evening, Monday, October 31st, from 6:00 until 8:00 PM at the Recreation Center. This is free to everyone. This year, there won't be a haunted house, but of course, there will be all the carnival activities and games for, for kids. So, and that's free and open to everybody. And the final thing I'd like to talk about is today, we have been waiting on delivery of a pedestal clock for our community, and it did, it was delivered today. And thanks to the help of the fellows from Public Works, it was offloaded from a flatbed truck, and with the help of Blakeman Steel, which is a business in our community, they, they offered to do this for free. They loaned us a crane, and we were, not we, because I wasn't here, I wish I could have been, but the guys offloaded it and put it on a pedestal that had already been placed there by Public Works last week. And it was, it's bolted down, it's, the clock was set, it does tell the correct time. Right now, it's not lit because we're, we don't have the electricity connected to it, but that should be done within, hopefully, the next month. So I want to thank Public Works. The beautification board is actually the group that allocated the funds, and the reason we had the extra funds this year is because we got some money back from Tech Dot. We had overpaid Tech Dot for some, for another landscaping project, so I think you can see the clock on the monitor. I think you'll agree, it's a really nice addition to Halton City. The face itself does say Halton City, and so we're really proud of that. Also, the newsletter is being mailed as we speak, and if anybody would like a copy, there's extra copies on the, on the desk on the way out of, out of this room. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Burns.
You're welcome.
Ms. Muir, anything to add?
No, sir.
Okay. We'll move then to the consent agenda. That contains item number one and two on our agenda tonight, the first being the minutes from the previous meeting, and the second being a resolution in support of suspending a proposal by Atmos Energy Corporation to implement an interim grip rate adjustment. This is considered to be self-explanatory and will be enacted with the council, with, by the council with one motion. I'm ready for a motion regarding the consent. Councilmember Brenson?
Thank you, Mayor. I move we approve the consent agenda with the corrections to the minutes that we took. I move we approve the consent agenda with the corrections to the minutes that we talked about in pre-council.
Councilmember Hutchison.
That's a second.
Have a motion and a second to approve consent. Those in favor, if you are those opposed, please register your vote, and I will display it at this time. It is a unanimous vote of the council. Item number three tonight is a public hearing, and here to introduce this item, our planning director, Mr. James Plisca.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, citizens of Halton City. Tonight is final plat number P-2204. It is a replat, therefore, the need for a public hearing. Consideration and/or action regarding a public hearing on Mr. Ron De Metro's application for the final plat of Lot 4R, Block 25, original town of Watauga Edition, being an amended plat of Lots 4 and 5, Block 25, original town of Watauga Edition, in the C-3 Commercial District, located on the south side of Western Center Boulevard, contains approximately .342 acres of land and locally known as 5400 Western Center Boulevard. It's actually at the intersection of Rusk and Western Center. The applicant is final plating the property in order to move an existing lot line to create one lot for future development. In addition, the property needs to come into compliance with the city's subdivision ordinance before a building permit or use be established on the site. Tonight, I'm going to list some rough proportionality as required by a new House Bill, and in my report, for water requirements, the city shall install a fire hydrant on the corner of Rust Street and Western Center Boulevard. For sanitary sewer requirements, the developer will be responsible for extending the existing sanitary sewer main along, north along Rust Street. Where it terminates, the developer will be responsible for installing a manhole or an approved cleanout at the end of the city's sanitary sewer main located along Rust Street. Also, tonight with this report, I have submitted a memo from the city engineer, Mr. Bennett Howe, discussing the rough proportionality of the city's development requirements for this plat. The plat was recommended for approval to the city council by the Planning and Zoning Commission on their September 27, 2005, meeting. Therefore, I formally submit an 11 by 17 reduced copy of said plat.
Okay, before I open the public hearing to members of the audience, I'll ask members of the council if you have any questions or comments for Mr. Plisca regarding this request for replat. Okay, there being none, thank you, Mr. Plisca.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll open the public hearing at this time to give anyone in the audience who wishes the opportunity to address the council regarding your position on this plat request, and we always begin with the applicant. Is the applicant here tonight? I believe that's Jan De Metro.
Mr. De Metro asked me today, Mayor, if I would represent him. Due to some reasons, he's not here tonight.
Okay. Since Mr. De Metro is not here, anyone in the audience wishing to speak either for or against this request for replat? Okay, there being none, I'll close the public hearing at this time, and we will move forward then with a motion from the council regarding the pleasure of the council on this request for replat. Councilmember Sutton.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve final plat number P-022-04.
Councilmember Reese.
That's for a second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion. There being none, if you will, register your vote, and it is a unanimous vote of the council. The next item on our agenda tonight is the visitor's citizens forum, and this time is set aside for any person who has business before the council that is not scheduled on the agenda to have an opportunity to address the council. We do have one speaker's request form that has been filled out and submitted to the secretary before the start of the meeting. I remind those who speak that all comments must be directed toward the presiding officer rather than to an individual council member or staff member. Each speaker must limit his or her comments to the subject matter listed on the speaker's request form and must refrain from personal attacks toward any individual. A six-minute time limit will be granted to the speaker who filled out the speaker's request card prior to the meeting, and a three-minute time will be granted to anyone who wishes to address the council that did not fill out one of the speaker's request form. I want to remind you that council cannot debate or discuss any issue brought forth at this time, nor can any formal action be taken, as it was not posted as an agenda item in accordance with the open meetings law. Okay, having said all the things legal, I need to say, I'll recognize Mr. Bill Jornay at this time, who wishes to address the council on the subject of emergency management system. Mr. Jornay?
Mayor, I'd like to withdraw that. I believe our chief answered most of the questions that I wanted to.
Thank you, Mr. Jornay. Do we have anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the council under the visitor's citizens forum? Okay, there being none, we will move forward then to the next item on the agenda, and that is item number four, resignations of board members. Do we have any resignations to be brought forth at this time? Okay, there being none. Item number five is appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. Councilmember Bransom.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to submit the name of Ike Cowell, 5785 Rockport Lane, for the Parks and Rec Board.
Okay, we have a nomination for the Parks and Rec Board that you just heard. What is the pleasure of the council regarding ratification?
I'm sorry, is it Ike Powell or Howell?
Howell.
Oh, Cowell. I was wrong on both cases, okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay, we have the nomination, if you will, register your desire regarding ratification of this appointment, and it is a unanimous vote of the council. That concludes all of the items. Since item number six, a tenant's requirement, is not something that's required since everyone is here tonight, I will announce at this time that the council will move into executive session as authorized by Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. Under Section .071 and .072, the council will reconvene in open session to consider action if any old matters discussed in executive session. And the council will meet, will give you a few minutes, at a quarter of eight, executive session will begin.